Smart trap. You guys ready at seven? Good evening, I'd like to call the Ferrisburg City Council meeting order. Monday, March twentieth, twenty twenty-three, seven P M., Ferrisburg City Hall. Roll call please.
Mayor Bliss.
Here.
Councilmember Donald.
Here.
Councilmember Carlson.
Here.
Councilmember Montgomery.
Here.
Councilmember Sayes.
Here.
Councilmember Murdoch.
Here.
Councilmember Kate.
Here.
Please rise for the invocation by councilmember Kate, filed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please pray. Gracious God, you have given your perfect gifts into the hands of imperfect people. For we pray for your guidance, your direction, and handling your gift of government to the best of our ability. In your name we ask it, amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic where it stands, on the nation of the ground, in its soul.
Okay, number five, public comments. This time on the agenda is for any citizen, direct brief comments or questions to City Council. Time for public comments will be given when an agenda item is discussed. If you have a comment or question, please raise your hand to be recognized by the mayor. After being recognized by the mayor, please give your name and address for the record and proceed with your comment or question. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Justin? Come on up.
Thank you for having me tonight, I appreciate it, it's been a little while since I've been out. Basically, this is our, sort of our annual report season, and we've been going around and just saying hi briefly to the city council meetings and township board meetings. Our annual twenty twenty-two report is online at MI Ottawa dot org slash clerk. That was a little bit of a busy year for us last year in twenty twenty-two, got a lot done in terms of court records. We were about a hundred and twenty-five or a hundred and thirty thousand documents there. Our registered deeds side, about forty thousand documents. So that's a lot of paperwork to move. Luckily, a lot of that is digital, so that's good. Really, the two areas that we have that are touchpoints with you guys are, on the registered deeds side, the what we call our Laredo system, which is basically the system that connects our land records, all the property transactions that happen in the county, and make sure that the city also has access to that information. So that's very helpful on the assessing side, as well as property records side for you guys. And then, of course, elections, which is a big, a big piece of our intersection with city and township government as well. So we've been very grateful to work with Amber and the team that she has here. Definitely excited to have her on board, and she's done a great job with our team as well. So we're really thankful for that, thankful for Craig for his continued work and management here. A couple of big things that are sort of coming down the pike in terms of elections will be in relation to proposal twenty-two dash two, which passed in November of last year. That, one of the, one of the big pieces of that is a mandatory nine days of early voting. And it basically requires, under the Michigan Constitution now, municipal governments to operate for a period of nine days, eight hours a day, an early voting site in the municipality. And so we're working together with our local clerks association to find ways that we can help alleviate some of that. There's a lot of components of proposal two that are costly. And the other big thing that we're doing is advocating for funding, particularly on the local level. Honestly, a lot of, a lot of the funding requirements kind of sidestep the county and fall on the local units of government. And so that's something that we're keeping on our radar and certainly want to collaborate in any way we can assist you guys with as well. So I just wanted to say hi and thank you for everything that you guys do. We appreciate working together and, and you know, this group is just a part of what makes our, our community strong and great. And we're, we're thankful for you guys, so thanks for everything you do.
Hey, Justin, could you state your name and address for the record and then what you actually do with the county?
Yeah, absolutely.
Thanks.
Uh, Justin Robuck, I'm at twenty-seven Wall Street, all the way in Zeeland. It's a great town. I'm in Grand Haven a lot too.
Okay.
Thank you, guys.
Anybody have questions for Justin to know?
One question, Mr. Robuck. Twenty-two dash two.
Yeah.
Does it have anything, any impact on absentee voting?
It does, so basically it expands the flexibility or ability to absentee vote with what they call the universal application. So basically, it allows a voter to submit one application and say, I want an absentee ballot mailed to me indefinitely for every election. That's something new. Previously, what would happen is you could get an application in the mail for every election. But you'd still have to fill that application out, sort of made that a two-step process for the voter, have to fill that out and sign it, mail it in, and then get a ballot. And to be honest with you, that's something that, you know, that I am concerned about in terms of election integrity. We want to make sure that, just simply because the voter rolls, I mean, we are a transient world, right? I mean, addresses update frequently. One of the things we're looking at doing, and this is another way, I think that the county can sort of help our local units of government facilitate some of these changes, is mailing a notice to every voter who signs up for that permanent list ahead of time to say, hey, by the way, there's an election coming up, you're gonna get a ballot in the mail. So that way, it also notifies the voter ahead of time to expect it, but it also would serve to essentially, you know, get mailed back to us in the event that there's an address change, so to help prevent sort of the mailing.
And when does counting of absentee ballots stop? That's a big question.
When does it stop?
When does it stop?
Yeah, so basically, the current law, I mean, nothing, nothing in proposal two specifically changed the piece about counting absentee ballots. But basically, current law says, you know, you stop counting when you're done, which is sometimes challenging, right? Because we have, particularly in more urban areas, you have volume of absentee ballots, and it takes a while to process those. My, my goal is accuracy over speed, in terms of what we always tell the, you know, our absentee counting boards at the local level, making sure that we're getting those things right. But essentially, counting can continue and has to actually continue until, until it's done. Right. It is, yeah, so this is the very first election that, that, basically that voter initiated constitutional amendment in November. Yeah, we're working hard to make sure that those things just run as smoothly as possible and secureity too, so. Appreciate it, guys, thank you.
Hey, thanks a lot for coming.
Thank you.
Okay, any more public comments? Hearing none, moving on. Uh, number six. Consideration for approval of consent agenda. A, approve the March twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-three City Council meeting minutes as printed. B, approve updated bank signatories for independent bank, adding clerk treasurer Amber Shaner and public service supervisor Matt Schingleback, and removing Jesse Wagamaker and Rebecca Hop.
Your honor.
Yes.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Or motion support, further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. Seven, new business. Eight, presentation, community energy plan. Ryan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. Pleasure to be here tonight. A lot has happened since I was last here in July in relation to the energy planning in the B L P service area and also the Consumers Power service area. So I have an update tonight. You have the full background going back to July, as well as the update in this document. But I think I'll focus most of my remarks verbally and then look at these slides in relation to some outcomes that you could expect with your involvement with community energy plan. First, I want to thank members of the Ferrisburg City Council that have attended. I think we've had five meetings. Councilmember Sayes, Councilmember Montgomery have attended, as well as representatives of Michigan Gas and, of course, the Board of Light and Power, and John Nash with Spring Lake Township, and several Grand Haven City Representatives and several Grand Haven Township Representatives. And we've covered a lot of ground, and I'm gonna make it quick. I also want to thank Betty Porter, who's here tonight from the city of Ferrisburg. Several other folks who have been following us from Ferrisburg are ill tonight or in Florida. So, but they're, they're tracking with what we're doing. Uh, first, Board of Light and Power is, has, has been very enthusiastic about energy waste reduction, which is what this group is about in relation to doing a community energy plan. You remember, it's based a lot on what Holland was able to do. I was city manager for a part of that time, so I have a very strong feeling and conviction that there's lots of good things that can happen here. Save people money, have more comfortable homes, and also produce good things for the environment. So the Board of Light and Power has been key. David Walters, the general manager, Eric Booth, and Paul Cedarquist, the last two have come to all of our meetings. Board of Light and Power had us come to their last meeting on last Thursday. And I was mentioning that I was gonna be here today, and if Craig, if you watch those meetings, I did a shout-out to you. I don't blame you. But anyway, I said that I was gonna give them a similar, you, a similar update. The Board of Light and Power has, as I said, been supportive of energy waste reduction. To the extent that they've said, they're funding the LED conversions right now on the streetlights, which reduces costs, saves energy, and carbon pollution. Uh, when that's completed, which I think is end of this next year, maybe June of twenty twenty-four, they would like to funnel a lot of those dollars into implementation of the community energy plan. Of course, we'll be working on it between now and then. That's super good news, and, and those are significant resources that, that will be very functional and useful. I want to tell you about Consumers Power. For some of your communities, some of Spring Lake, some of Grand Haven Township, it's served by Consumers Power, not by the So we have reached out to them and met with Rich Howdeman, who's the representative, Lisa Beerling, who's working on something called on-bill financing. You heard that from me before, and I'll explain more in a minute. Matthew Ritchie, and of course, Paul Sacks from Ottawa County, who is always doing good things all around the county. And the wonderful news there is they are doing a pilot program for on-bill financing. I've been talking about it, because we did it in Holland, two hundred and seventy-five homes. And I'll explain what that is again, if you want me to refresh your memory. But they're, they're on the same track, and they were, they wanted me to share with them everything we did in Holland, which I was happy to do. Holland members, Holland representatives came and met with our community energy plan December fifth, I think it was, and went through all of the details as well. And they're following that lead, so we're all, seem to be headed in a similar direction. And furthermore, when they got back to me, they said, we've already started that pilot program for businesses. And they asked me for nominations of businesses or small entities that would be, I'm interested in being part of this pilot program. And they sent me a flyer, so I'm gonna hand this out. And that just is indicative of the kind of cooperation that, and the same direction that everyone's going. The way on-bill financing works is after energy conservation, the savings you have on the energy bills can then be plowed into paying back a no interest, or I think they said no interest there, on their small interest loan. So there's no extra cost, and you, you get the upfront capital, and you do good things for the environment. So Consumers is interested in working with nominees from Ferrisburg that you might have for their residences as well. There's always a little bit of, you know, small print. They want to make sure that whoever from Ferrisburg is participating in their program has credit, creditworthiness, obviously. You know, that's part of what, what they, they need to go through. So anyway, they're very open to, if you're part of the Board of Light and Power, of course, you'll be part of this anyway through the community energy plan work that we're doing. But also, other members, other residents in Ferrisburg can benefit, or in consumers. That's my message. Second, we've been working on other grants. Someone suggested we work with D T E. They're very open to supporting us, but there's no one in the service area. Michigan Gas is very interested in supporting us, came to our meetings. There are a lot of customers, and they will work with us on rebates that we might come up with in the community that, that we think is, is important. You're gonna hear more about that in Holland in a minute. Meanwhile, the Grand Haven Area Community Foundation awarded twenty-five thousand dollars to the Community Energy Task Force, which is under the umbrella of the city of Grand Haven. It's not City Grand Haven's money for this whole effort, but that's the vehicle through which the monies will flow for the purpose of benefiting us all. Uh, the Department of Energy, Great Lakes, and Environment, did I say that right? Craig's closer to this than I am now, I just call it Eagle. They announced last week that they're awarding twenty-five thousand dollars to this effort as well. So the paperwork is going through the city of Grand Haven, assuming their city council remains comfortable with everything, then we'll have those dollars. And of course, the city of Grand Haven budgeted twenty-five thousand dollars about nine months ago. So that's seventy-five thousand dollars, and that exceeds our expectations. But we're not there yet, you might remember, it's there on the sheet, a hundred thousand was the goal. So we can make sure we have enough, and we're going to the Lata Foundation in May. And of course, Grand Haven Township hasn't decided, nor has Grand Haven Township. And I'm here tonight with hopefully all the information you need for you to decide on what to budget. So that's, that's where we are funding-wise. We've started the scope of work, and it's a competitive process, it was about to bid. You might be wondering now, why do we need all this money? Holland's spent about twice that, around a hundred and eighty thousand. The reason is, you need science to come up with the carbon data to figure out what your past use of carbon was, what the future projections, predictions might be, and then talk about through a grassroots process involving all your boards and commissions as well, where you want to end up in relation to strategies. And it could be everything from, let's just plant more trees, or it could be, let's put E V charging stations. Or it could be, let's do this on-bill financing and make sure that we, you know, have people participate, like in Holland, almost three hundred people did total, three hundred homes. Or maybe you want to just do weatherization. Whatever you as a community want to do, the facilitators, that's part of the reason for the dollars, will be paid to facilitate community meetings and come up with strategies that work for Ferrisburg. What I'm suggesting in the scope of work is that they do, they have a better, they have a good, better, best, so that when it came to you at the end of the process, which you hear from May, you would be able to say, well, yeah, I think the council member or my constituents probably would like the middle road approach. I'm just guessing, you know, but maybe it's not, maybe it's the other approach. You'd have options, you'd have alternatives, is what I'm saying, in terms of whatever strategies you might want deployed. Of course, with all the infrastructure bill, there's, there's, there's assistance, and there's a lot of knowledge out there growing about the green economy. So I was coached, and Councilmember Sayes and Councilmember Montgomery, please tell me if I get off track, but I was coached to focus most of my comments on telling you concretely what things the city of Holland community accomplished once they went through, down a similar route. So I think that's what kind of us. Roll it. What you have in front of you was modified a little bit by me today, which looks a little bit different than this because I, you know, never stopped tweaking, but it's similar. So what the city of Holland did was save one point seven million kilowatt hours after the community energy plan was done, and seven hundred and seventy thousand dollars in dollars, kind of the average dollars in the last five years. Average, nine hundred and one thousand dollars is what was saved. Plus thousands of metric tons of carbon that was not burned. On top of that, they, they changed the rebate system, Holland Board of Public Works, related with the city. A little differently than the Board of Light and Public, Board of Light and Power, but as I mentioned, the Board of Light and Power is very interested in being cooperative. Um, so they ended up with a hundred and eighteen dollar average residential rebate that, that people could get. Hundred fifteen dollars was the average first year electrical savings of people who participated in these programs. They did a business rebate that averaged six thousand seven hundred dollars, and the average savings for business was thirty-four hundred dollars. So I passed that out, about what Consumers is doing also. That's, they're following some of the same, same leads, so that they can create those kinds of savings for their customers as well. So the next slide.
Ryan?
Yes.
Could you explain the rebate a little bit and kind of explain how the residents receive those rebates? How they?
Thank you. A rebate is, of course, a reimbursement once you've made an energy investment, whether it's weatherization, or a new washer and dryer, or a new water heater, that's energy efficient, you know, smart. What do you call those? Energy smart, I think, and it needs to meet certain standards, then you can get a rebate. Or it could be insulation, you know, there's all sorts of varieties. So those were beefed up, was the message. And these are numbers from the city of Holland, you know, I didn't come up with them, that's, that came from their documents that they presented to the city council in Holland. So it, it's something that, that people were able to get reimbursed for once they made energy investments. Why did they make energy investments? Because they realized the savings long-term, the greater comfort in their home, and the environmental reasons. And, and then the B L P W came up with a way to support that. One new one I just read about is electrical plug-in lawn mowers. A lot of utilities are now providing a little bit of offset for that cost for all the right reasons. Thank you, did I cover that? So it's hard to read, it's maybe easier in your, your paper, but results to date in Holland, this was the on-bill residential energy saving program. So they, they would come up with fifteen thousand dollars per home. Go use it, make your home as comfortable as you want it to be. You make those decisions, you hire, or they give you a range of contractors that do this work, but they make, you know, the homeowner's in charge. You only have, all you have to do is pay it back with your energy savings. So later on, you're gonna see the savings that I saw in my home, and I didn't do it this way, I just did it from out of pocket. But two hundred and seventy-five homes benefited of it. And it resulted in four million dollars of new investment. That four million dollars ends up becoming new tax base, a portion of it based on what the assessors do. The energy score improved for home, heat reduction reduced by thirty-three percent, and most of them used what was known as on-bill financing, which is a program that takes cooperation with the electric provider. Zoomers is doing the same thing, I mentioned the pilot program. Board of Light and Power isn't that far along yet, but they're learning about this as we go. It's a shared learning process, and that's one of the beauties of doing a community energy plan. It creates this energy literacy, so everyone knows what we're talking about. At the end of the day, even if anyone's glossing over now, if you're, once we're through this process, I'll make, you'll make more sense than I do. Next slide. So they found that the most frequent energy waste reduction in Holland was attic insulation, rim joists insulation, and knee wall insulation. Rim joists, I had no idea what a difference that would make in my home. I mean, my, my, I used to have frozen toes, but that rim joists just keeps the heat in the house, and your floors are warmer. Much of the home energy work after development plans was outsourced, so it also helps the economy. You might have seen some of these organizations, Michigan Saves, Energy Finance Solutions. There were four local waste reduction contractors, I think West Michigan Glass Block was one that, that enjoyed bidding on the work, and an agency called Concord that did some of the financial work for the Holland Board of Public. Next slide. So that was, those are macro benefits, the last couple of slides. This happens to be the home that I lived in when I was city manager of Holland. I live in Grand Haven now, we operate that home as Airbnb, and our guests are very comfortable. We were very comfortable because we had a reduction in natural gas by sixty percent. We reduced our electricity use twenty-one percent. So those, those are real savings, and of course, with gas prices going up now, natural gas, with all the utility uncertainties, you know, we benefited from that. So I also want to make a point that the, the on-bill legislation that we went to the legislature to get because Holland wanted to use it, now every municipal utility, B L P can do it, but because of that, Consumers, it's been extended to all the other utilities. So Consumers Power, as I mentioned, is now looking at doing pilot programs. So those reduced bills can be possible for all Tri-Cities residents, whether it be B L P or Consumers. Next slide. So here are some more outcomes. The city of Holland employed a part-time residential energy advisor, and it was a very little bit of money, but it was their contribution, and that, that way, someone who knew what they were talking about more than I would come to your home and help you, walk you through the various things that you could do and what benefits they would have. There was a similar person that the B P W hired called a commercial and energy, commercial and industrial energy advisor. So we all know that it's hard to, to walk through our taxes, for example, and it's great to go to H and R Block. Well, this is essentially someone that walks you through the maze of energy options in a way that, that you can make decisions. I already mentioned the additional rebates, there were a hundred and fifty Nest Smart Thermostats that were given out, partly through the help of Michigan Gas, and I mentioned Michigan Gas wants to be part of this. Seventy-five hundred utility box insulation strips, they're nothing, you might have seen them, they are kind of cool. They, they do keep air from coming in through the junction boxes. Eight thousand LED lights were distributed, over five hundred trees planted, forty thousand square feet. Was worn by excess heat from their Board of Public Works natural gas plant, that's called district heat. That won't work for Ferrisburg, is we don't have that situation, that, that was something that happened there. Fifteen at-risk youth got jobs going door-to-door, it was part of a knock-on-every-door campaign to let people know what's available. There was something called the Holland Energy Fund that was created, it's jointly funded by the city and the utility, and I think to the tune of like three hundred thousand dollars a year. I'm not sure we'll do all these things here, you know, I'm not promising that, but, but the conversations ended up producing these outcomes, and we'll do something better, or suits us better anyway. Over ten miles of bike lanes, bike paths, shared lanes, charros were installed for non-motorized transportation. Weekly articles in the Holland Sentinel still occurring, I see them every week. And there was a variety of city building waste reduction, I forgot how many city buildings there were, something like nineteen. And through doing the energy waste reduction, we saved a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars a year that went back to a more comfortable building, less environmental degradation, and also a, a place that, that felt, you know, that we were saving money. So you have parks, right? This is the coolest thing. These lights were made by a firm in Holland, and they're actually mammal sensing. So when you're not in the park, there's a light on, it's actually only burning at ten percent of its capacity in Holland. When you get close to it, like if I approached, if, if that light was where Craig is now, and I approached that, you weren't there, Craig, about, like you're halfway towards him, and the light would then go on full, full steam. So some of that hundred and thirty thousand savings is like, I don't remember the exact number, something like ten or fifteen thousand. From lights that would just burn all night long and didn't have any benefit, they still had the anti-crime benefit at ninety percent. You couldn't tell with your naked eye that, that there was any less energy being consumed. It was only when you got close that it went full steam, and, and we saved a bunch of money that way. Smart buildings, every building had controls that would sense the occupancy, sense the carbon dioxide. carbon dioxide, understand what's going on in the weather, interact with each other as a unit, and reduce the amount of heat needed. I mentioned the park lights. I mentioned the COT sensors, smart boilers, smart AC, replacement windows. Sure, how you doing there? But we paid for those replacement windows from those savings. And overall, there was 2% electrical savings in Holland for residences during that program when I was there. And there were twice as many electric vehicles that had been registered because it was something part of that energy literacy. Next slide. So it's too hard to read, but everything I just said is grouped in the... You can see it's kind of a stepwise process. Not all, not everything happened at once. It was over a matter of time that these strategic outcomes occurred. So this is on your, there's all these sources, videos, additional things in writing you can look at if you're interested. Next slide. And it all starts with a simple mental picture. This is where we are now. For that. That mental diagram is helpful to kind of understand what the possibilities are. Next slide. Good. Well, on your hard copy, there are two more slides. One says, "Thank you." There's a little city there. And it says, "Please consider putting 7,500 into your budget for a community energy plan as part of the Board of Light and Power service area, but in a way that would extend benefits to all of Fairiesburg." The deliverables will be, you'll get your historic carbon footprint data, you'll understand future trajectories, good, better, best, and you'll get energy-saving strategies. And you can mix and match because you'd be able to do it. And then you'll end up with energy savings, more comfortable buildings, and maybe less traffic, depending on how many people end up using all other means. And a higher tax base, certainly. Thank you for listening. Happy to answer any questions.
I have one, two, actually. I understand before and after measuring the carbon footprint, all that stuff. But our before here was because we were burning coal. We don't burn coal anymore. We buy it off the grid. How do you measure that? We don't know, we don't know how much is being burned for us to buy power off the grid. Do we?
Well, we're going to see a number that's probably higher than that because of that coal burning in the past.
Well, that's the key, in the past. We're not going to start in the past with this process, I hope. We're going to start where we are now, right?
Right. And then you'll see where we are now based on the portfolio that BLP has, which is like 28% renewables. But they still, they still get power from coal.
I'll leave that up to the big brains to figure that out. It's just, it's kind of confusing to me. The other question I have is for homeowners that, like myself and Lisa here, that live in condominiums, where we're responsible for what goes on inside the building, but not for what goes on outside the building. I know our association is talking right now about improving insulation. Who gets the benefits from that? We pay the utility bills, but the association's going to bear the cost through our dues. It's very complex. You know?
Thank you for saying that. That way, I won't have to give you an answer right now. I absolutely...
I just, I just hope it's something that's being considered for people who, you know, we've got four units under the same roof, and we're all going through the same thing, but not every unit is doing the same thing. As far, you know, if I, you know, I just, I just spent a bunch of money last year putting in a brand-new, more efficient furnace and air conditioner. But some of my neighbors have 30-year-old units. It's one of those kind of imponderable things that I hope gets discussed in all this.
It's a great question. It did not arise in Holland. I don't know why not, but I can see the dilemma. And our facilitators, our energy consultants probably have some models they can share with us. But I'll make a note of it meanwhile. Thank you.
Ryan, I had a question. Can you explain Fairiesburg return on investment and how that would work for our residents?
So I was, I shared some of that when I was here in July, and then I looked at it again the last couple of days and sent Craig a slide late in the day. So I think it's slide number...
Number 12.
Number 12, thank you. So assuming that someone does the on-bill financing, they can expect $100 a month less in energy costs, or 53%. That's, those are rough averages. That savings, if there were 100 homes that did it, that would end up being $636 a year and $63,600 in savings to those 100 homeowners. Over 15 years, that's almost a million-dollar savings, $150,000 in savings. And everyone would be eligible if on-bill, you know, 100 maybe do it, but all, I guess there's 1,800 homes here. We find a way that all of them could be eligible. So that return on investment is pretty good, almost a million dollars for their investments that they would pay back from the savings. So my math says that's an eight-to-one return of your dollars of 7,500.
Okay. And can you give me an example of, let's say, my neighbor, his average utility bill for electricity is $100? So how can he save that 53%? What would he need to do?
If it's a 1950s home, if it's a 1999 home, this may not be the case. But if it's 1950s home, chances are rim joist is not well insulated, attic is maybe not well insulated, the furnace might be not up to efficiency standards, nor the water heater. Perhaps there's a refrigerator in the garage that's cooling beer, but it's really an expensive way to cool beer, to have an old refrigerator in the garage. BLP, because of what we're talking about, I'm just on the side, they've come up with a $50 rebate. They'll not only pay you 50 bucks, but they'll come pick it up for you, your old refrigerator. So probably those things would change. The way the Holland did it is, here's $15,000 to make your changes. And then you owe us so many dollars a month after that, and the savings that those changes amounted to, they were paid back. And I think they had over a 10-year period, 10 or 15, it was over the life of whatever it is that they put in. So it didn't go beyond the life of that improvement.
Okay.
Your Honor?
Yes?
You talk about the homeowner would have 15 grand, let's say, for improvements. Where is the 15 grand coming from?
The way the city of Holland did it is through the Holland Energy Fund. They took a, they, the Holland Board of Public Works believed in this for the purposes of saving energy, saving some capital costs, having more dollars to be spent elsewhere. So they, they used a portion of their energy E and O dollars, I think they were called, energy optimization dollars, and added it to the Holland Energy Fund every year. The city of Holland had, when I was there, $50,000 that they contributed towards the same things that they believed in. And through a combination of those mechanisms, plus Semco threw in those Nest thermostats, and there were other things that people threw in. A combination of those resources is what made this happen. There were also some grants written. More grants can be written than, I mean, for like EV charging stations now than ever before. You know, it takes some effort, and it all depends on whether you want them. But there's a lot of resources available.
So where does grant money come from?
Yeah.
Where does grant money come from?
From the community foundation.
From taxpayers?
Well, from the community foundation.
Yeah.
The 25,000, it comes from our friends and neighbors who wanted to contribute to this and the interest that the foundation earned. From Eagle, the Energy Great Lakes Environment. I don't know their sources of dollars, but I suspect it originates with taxpayers.
Eagle is a department of the state of Michigan, so they obviously are taxpayer-funded. The 15 grand would be, has to come from somewhere. And someone, money has a cost to it. So someone at least has to pay the interest on it, plus come up with the 15 grand.
Yeah, exactly. So it was, I think, 3.5% or 4% is what the Holland Board of Public Works through the Holland Energy Fund charged. So they recovered all of their costs, and depending on what the interest rates are doing, maybe earned a bit, maybe lost a bit. It all depended on how things fluctuated. All they tried, they pegged it to some benchmark. Also, they were concerned, as we all should be concerned, if someone does this, and what if they fall on hard times and can't pay their bill? No one wants their power shut off. So they had a very tiny fraction that they put aside into a loan-loss reserve. That loan-loss reserve was there in case. 10 years later, they've never had to use it. Because they do a credit check in the beginning. If someone is obviously uncreditworthy, then they would not comply.
Ryan, one thing important to point out, too, is what makes us different than the city of Holland is BLP has funding for such programs as we're talking about already, don't they? It's just how they decide to disperse that funding. So the city wouldn't necessarily be, you know, on the line for the majority of the retrofit money. It would, BLP has a fund set up for that already. Is that correct?
I can't speak for the city of Grand Haven, I can't speak for the BLP. But I can tell you, and if Dave is watching, please correct us, correct us later, Dave. What I can tell you is that the Board of Public Light and Power has put upwards of $400,000 a year into the energy waste reduction. They're using that the last two years. They're using that for conversion of the LED streetlights. What the general manager has told me, and what I've heard him say to others, is that when that project is done, if we have a community energy plan that has energy waste reduction, this isn't pie-in-the-sky stuff. This is real savings to the utility. They will put some of those dollars, unknown amount, remains to be seen, into the strategies that you, the communities, come up with.
Yes?
I am a Board of Light and Power customer. And on my bill, I get charged every month. Part of my bill goes to that energy reduction effort. They told me at one time, you can, you convert all your house, your house lights, electricity over to LEDs, you're going to get a savings. Then they go and they charge me for a loss of funding for what they lost in their profits for people that switched over to LED lighting. And I'm just concerned that, like Councilmember Carlson here, you know, this money's going to be coming from me two different ways. If I pay it through the tax dollars, I'm going to be paying through my homeowner's bill. And I've already gone through my house, and I've really butted that thing down. I just put in a brand-new furnace, insulation, you know, my R factor, I made sure I had a very, very high R factor. So I'm just concerned that it's not going to benefit people like me that are already paying into this. And if the, we're asking our taxpayers out there to do the same thing, they're going to be double paying through their tax dollars and through their, through their electric bills. Because the electric company is not going to, not going to eat the savings. They've already shown that. The natural gas bills are going up. They keep telling us by 2050, the government Whitmer wants the state to be totally electric, no gas emissions, no, no coal, nothing. All electric cars, everything's electric by 2050. And they're assuming that the natural gas prices will be the same then as they are now. But they've already gone up. The churches, we just got an annual increase of almost $700 a year for the natural gas. I like the idea. I like helping people. But I don't know what, if it's something that we should be spending taxpayer dollars on. I think it should be something perhaps that the taxpayers should be made aware of. And if they want to pay into it, give them a chance to do that. I'm just concerned about the tax, spending taxpayer dollars on it.
Your Honor?
This isn't just about saving citizens' money. This is about saving the city money as well. I mean, once we get an energy plan, the more efficient we can make our government buildings and our parks and all, you know, all the uses that we have for electricity, this is going to help the city save money as well, you know? So it's not just going to be all taxpayer-funded. It's going to save the city money as well. So I, I think it's kind of a wash, in my opinion. You know, you save the city money, taxes are going to be lower, of course. So, you know, I don't see it costing a lot to the citizens, personally.
And it will give our citizens opportunity to increase their taxable value of their home as well, which is beneficial for the city. You know, utilities are, you know, charge you, Tim, or anyone through, you know, they're approved with rate cases for how much they can charge. So it's not always them just saying, "We're going to charge Tim more money," right? But they do need to factor in and push energy efficiency options. I think us giving them these options, I don't, I don't know if, I guess I'm struggling to understand how, if you don't partake, your bill would go up.
The first, first part in the, just, on the assessment part, just putting in a new furnace... We're all going to pay for the law, whatever the electric company or the power company loses. They're going to come up with some charge to charge us to cover it.
Yeah, I think this, you know, they're asking 7,500 to do the study and really figure out where our cost-saving availability is. I think that's a small price to pay to get a benchmark, an idea of where our community is with our, you know, our... you know, our our environmental impact and our energy impact throughout our community. And it's going to open up our citizens for a lot of opportunities, as well as our city where, you know, we we have these options to save money. And, you know, I I don't know that, you know, adding a new furnace will increase taxable value. But over time, re-insulate your house and add new appliances at some point does increase taxable value of your home. So Craig, can you educate us on how we determine the taxable value and what would cause it to go up?
Typically, if a homeowner replaces a furnace, it doesn't increase the value at that time. But when the house sold, then it can increase the value by that amount of a new furnace.
Right. So adding new windows and new appliances and and everything else, when they sell the home, will increase the taxable value.
Do, Ryan, were you done with your presentation?
I am, but I've got to answer questions.
Okay. So do you guys have any more questions for Ryan? Otherwise, we'll go to B, discussion. Okay.
Ryan, I don't see on the presentation the purpose of this. Is the purpose to not burn carbon or is the purpose to have homeowners save energy?
Both of those, plus energy reliability. And that's why the Borderline Power is interested because with the variety of of impacts on energy, we just talked about the way the gas prices went up, what's going on in other parts of the world. Energy reliability is important. So during those peak periods, you can have brownouts. The David Walters was speaking of his concern about that earlier going into the summer. And without so much consumption, with a more measured approach, less waste, you don't have to worry about that.
It's, I could certainly understand and I wholeheartedly support the making people's homes more energy efficient so that they can increase their comfort level, like with you and your steel plate issue. From a, from the United States, we've almost reached the point of diminishing returns in terms of reducing our carbon footprint compared to what's going on in in countries that are just joining the industrial revolution. And we'd be much better off rather than us concentrating on putting better and better scrubbers to go from ninety-eight percent clean to ninety-nine percent clean coal burning, spending it somewhere else. If if people are so interested in reducing our carbon footprint, where you've got people just doing open burning around the world. And I I don't understand the fixation for government here in the United States pushing forth this drive to eliminate the use of carbon-based fuels here when it's just going crazy around the world and we are just handcuff, handcuffing ourselves economically.
Mr. Mayor, I know that we're not supposed to get in an interaction, so I I don't, I want to avoid that, but may I make two closing comments?
Here.
There we go.
There we go.
In my opinion, Rich, it's it's about sustainability in the future. You know, our national defense relies on our electrical grid. If we can't sustain that, we're going to be a poor country because of it. You know, our our comfort relies on our electrical grid, the sustainability. And as as populations and cities grow, it's going to get harder and harder to supply all, everybody with the power and that they need. So this is a step in the direction to make not only our city more sustainable, but our country more sustainable so we don't have to worry about those threats against the electric grid. That's my opinion on it.
Yeah, I think we we have a lot that's going to be hitting our grid in the the next ten years. You know, it it's important that we find better ways to produce energy, but it's important that we find better ways to save energy as well so that we can meet that balance and avoid the brownouts that other parts of the country have had and and we could have.
I do understand your concern, Rich, with what's going on around the world. But, you know, we got to think locally here and what's the best for our community and our sustainability in the future. And, you know, I think we're getting a little bit off track when we're talking about open burning in other parts of the world and stuff. We got to concentrate on what's important here to our citizens. That's kind of how I feel on it.
So I I guess I should ask, Your Honor, Craig, a question if you're okay with that. Craig, I I mean, how how impactful would seventy-five hundred dollars be to our budget?
Uh, you know, it impacted us somewhat.
Sure.
Seventy-five hundred dollars, but this is a one-time payment. You know, if City Council wants to do, we can put, try to put in budget.
So, Your Honor, you might have to ask Ryan a question.
Here.
Ryan, is there any future payments you'd be looking for from municipalities?
Not me. Your residents might come to you with some strategies.
Sure.
You would have a choice, good, better, best.
Yeah.
And you would only invest what you want to invest. And it might be zero, maybe something more than that. I am old enough to remember the litter bug campaign. Remember how everything used to be, the highways were just full of trash? Every little bit counts and now they're not. I I kind of feel like that in relation to energy investments.
Now, we talked about on-bill financing a little bit. I'm assuming consumers will cover their on-bill financing?
They're still coming up with the details. They have announced their business on-bill financing, so I I can't answer for them. They asked us and some of you were in the December meeting where Holland provided all the details about their on-bill financing. I've sent all that documentation to consumers. Hopefully, it'll be something similar, which produced the good outcomes we just saw.
Okay, so let's go down to seven B, discussion, and to take action if appropriate, community energy plan funding, which we've been talking a lot about that, so.
Your Honor, this is just the discussion, so we're not going to make any motions this evening. Is that correct?
Um, yeah, it does say in here, take action if appropriate. So if we want to proceed, then, yeah, we would need a motion support, discuss it further and vote on it.
Well, this time I'd like to make a motion that we contribute the seventy-five hundred dollar to the energy efficiency plan.
Okay, any support?
All support.
All right, will support and further discussion. Okay, hearing none. Craig, you want to do a roll call vote?
House Member O'Donnell.
No.
House Member Carlson.
No.
House Member Montgomery.
Yes.
House Member Seis.
Yes.
House Member Murdoch. House Member Kate.
No.
Mayor Bliss.
I'm a yes.
Motion passed.
Okay, moving on. See, public hearing. Proposed development project at Fire Barn Park. We'll open the public hearing at seven fifty-eight PM. You want me to read this, Craig?
You can, sure.
The, okay. Uh, notice of public hearing. A public hearing will be held by Ferriesburg City Council Monday, March twentieth, twenty twenty-three, after seven PM, Ferriesburg City Hall. Purpose of the hearing is a review of Ferriesburg residents and other interested persons of proposed development project at Fire Barn Park, one seven four one one North Shore Road. All interested persons will be given the opportunity to be heard. Written comments can be mailed or submitted to Ferriesburg City Hall. Craig, did we receive any emails or mail regarding this?
We have not received any comments.
Oh, okay. After the public hearing, City Council will consider as an agenda item for approval submitting a Michigan National Resource Trust Fund, MNRTF, grant application for the development of a new universal accessible pathway through the park in connecting to the play area, new asphalt parking lot with ADA parking spaces and renovation of the ball field and an open lawn play space. Information about the proposed project is available for inspection at Ferriesburg City Hall, one seven five two zero Ridge Avenue during regular business hours. Any person who needs special accommodations to participate must notify the city clerk at least one week prior to the scheduled hearing. Uh, any public comment on this public hearing? Seeing none. Public comment, or public hearing is closed at eight PM. Okay, moving on. Seven D, discussion, take action if appropriate to approve the resolution approving the submittal of a Michigan National Resource Trust Fund grant application for the development of a new universal accessible pathway through the park in connecting to the play area, new asphalt parking lot with ADA parking spaces and renovation of the ball field and an open lawn play space.
Your Honor.
Yes.
I will make a motion to approve a resolution approving the submittal of the Michigan National Resources Trust Fund grant application for the development of a new universal accessible pathway through the park and connecting to the play area, new asphalt parking lot with ADA parking spaces and renovation of the ball field into an open lawn play space.
Motion support, further discussion?
Your Honor.
Yes.
Uh, just some clarification on this map that we have. There's a proposed, uh, universal sites and future universal accessible sites. And this grant, just clarification, this grant is just on the proposed sites, not the future ones? Uh, for example, the future, uh, universal accessible pickleball courts, the pavilions, the splash pad.
Yeah, those are future phases.
Okay. That's not included in this.
Correct.
Okay.
So we need the infrastructure first. So parking and then the big piece was rerouting the bike path that Fire Chief has had. Uh, a lot of concerns on that with bikes passing in front of the, um, fire station. And and that was something he came to us last year on, was rerouting that bike path around the backside of the Fire Barn.
I I agree with that. Amazing how many people are, you use that, that path out there.
Especially now with it being a connector, no.
But I I do see in here the, under the shared bike pedestrian trail, on the the last item, which is in green, it says replace, replace old bike trail with six-foot concrete sidewalk along North Shore Drive.
Yeah, you mind if I address that?
Sure.
So as you can see on the map, right now, it's all gravel, right? So we have to put a new parking lot in, obviously. There's not distinction between often, that bike bike path there is wide. It's not clearly a sidewalk, so you've, I'm sure you've seen people drive on it in that specific area, right? So putting just a standard sidewalk just in that spot will give pedestrians somewhere to walk, but it's really diverting the, and makes it a clear, this is a footpath, right? It's not a place for cars to drive. Um, but it's still diverting the majority of the traffic through the actual bike path.
It kind of looks like rally right here.
Yeah, probably just, uh.
Parking, right?
Yeah, just in front of the parking there. Um, the rest is all paved already.
Question I have is the the concrete curbs and gutters around the the parking lot? Um, it kind of defeats the purpose of having an ADA license if people have to go up over curbs to. Would it be possible to just eliminate that and just have a parking lot with maybe enhanced curbs like we have on Ridge Street? My wife has a terrible time stepping up, going up my curbs and, and if they wanted to go to, like, from the parking lot to the bathroom, they get, they're going to have to go over a curb. And either they have to go down and do a long walk around, uh, up to the, up to the bathroom from the, from the parking lot or vice versa.
Yeah, so there's, there's pretty significant accessible areas there on the the north side of the parking lot. Um, I I mean, that's, that's definitely something we can bring up and and discuss when we get to that point. I mean, I don't see any issue with it. But, you know, that would be, you'd be cutting between cars, right? So typically.
Well, if you have to park, you have to barely find a handicap spot open.
Yeah.
And I'm out driving, there's a lot of people that are going to be using those. But if I really is not a, you know, allow us really enough for the number of people that we have that are are handicapped. Also, the the, with the, with the concrete areas, you know, asphalt is is a lot more environmentally friendly. It it allows water to go through, to pass through. Uh, it's more, concrete is more intended for, um, so I just, uh, see, there's a lot of, a lot of concrete in here. But perhaps we, they could look at.
Yeah, so so typically you, you, they surround the asphalt with some sort of a concrete, whether it's the improved curbs or regular curbs or or whatever. But I think that's a significant portion of that. I think the majority of this is, like, the parking lot's asphalt and the bike path is asphalt. Yeah, so, so, I mean, I'm sure there's structural things with asphalt versus concrete. I I I mean, that's why we hire an engineer. Um, so I'm sure we can bring that to them and and get their recommendation.
Other question I got, uh, before, Craig, where where's this money coming from that we, is this out of our general budget?
The city match would be, yes.
Okay. Can we afford to do this in the rest of our infrastructure, like our roads, maintain our roads and, uh, the the plans that we have?
So this is the second year for applying for this grant. We applied for it last year and the city match was built into the city budget. We're going to roll that over into this, uh, current, our proposed budget for twenty-three, twenty-four and try to build it into the, uh, budget. Um, you notice that there is an increase in the cost. Um, last year it was a hundred and eighty thousand dollar match. Now, it, the cost estimate has increased about thirty-three thousand dollars. So it's about another sixteen thousand dollars for the city and we'll build that into the budget as well. That's correct. Yep. We're not gonna put ourselves in a hole.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carried. Uh, seventy. Discussion. Take action if appropriate. Approve a bid to clean and video sanitary sewer lines from Plumbers Environmental Services, twenty thousand seven hundred fifty-seven dollars. Craig?
So the city got that saw grant a couple of years back and part of the um, process, again, that saw grant was televising all the sanitary sewer lines and on the back page of your uh, packet, there was a map that was uh, created through all the television and cleaning and the engineer, when they reviewed the video, uh, made a a chart showing which streets should be uh, televised in the future. In twenty-twenty-three, red lines are um, scheduled to be televised and then the next section will be in twenty-twenty-eight. And you'll notice that uh, the gables is, is in red. Uh, that's a, a fairly new development. Uh, the reason that it's in, made the first cut is because um, the saw grant, when we had that, uh, it wouldn't cover, it televised anything that was newer than twenty years old. And now the gables is in that uh, ballpark. So we want to televise that to make sure that uh, everything is functioning properly.
Okay. And then Craig, how much of that, six ninety-five do we have left in the fund?
None. It was all spent.
Oh, none of it was spent?
Yeah, we had to spend it within three years.
Oh, okay.
It was all spent.
All of it.
All of it.
All spent?
Yeah.
Okay, gotcha. Yeah, okay. And then this would be twenty thousand is the cheapest.
Right.
Estimate from plumbers.
This was included in, in the current budget.
Okay, so we already, you already have it in the budget. Okay. Okay, anybody want to make a motion?
Your Honor, make a motion.
Okay.
Support.
Motion support. Further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. Uh, F. Discussion. Take action if appropriate to approve a proposal from Fleas and Vanderbrink for two hundred and, for twenty-twenty-three Bridge Inspection Services for three thousand nine hundred dollars. I did notice page two on here, under engineering fees, says we proposed a complete scope of work task, says April twenty-twenty-two. And then it says, yeah, October twenty-twenty-two. So it should read twenty-twenty-three, correct?
Correct.
All right. Okay, anybody want to make a motion on this one?
Make a motion, Your Honor. Of thirty-nine hundred to Fleas and Vanderbrink for the twenty-twenty-three Bridge Inspection Services?
Okay, motion support. Further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. Uh, G. Discussion. Take action if appropriate to approve a bid for the Dogwood Drive Road Shoulder Project from Tiles Escavating Inc. for ten thousand two twenty-five. Craig?
So last summer, the Dogwood Drive Project was put together and from Mohawk to North State Limits, um, the shoulders were, were lined with uh, stone. Uh, when the guys started plowing, we started getting calls through City Hall that the stones were going in people's yards. And so the Public Works Department got a couple of quotes to replace the stone with a, take it out and put in some slag, which is a typical gravel shoulder. And so we have a two bids here. One from Tiles Escavating was a low bid, ten thousand two twenty-five. He's done uh, uh, work in the city before and we recommend going with his bid.
Yeah, it looks like the other estimate was like fifty-seven thousand? Holy cow. Quite a bit more. Yes.
Question for Craig. Um, Craig, is there a reason they put the stone in there to begin with in, in the proper aggregate?
In hindsight, it shouldn't have been approved.
So, I mean, doesn't the contractor bear some responsibility into this? I mean, he's the, supposed to be the professional and know, you know, what materials are supposed to be used for what? I just feel like, um,
It surely, it comes back to the city.
It does, regardless. Okay.
Was an error.
Okay, anybody want to make a motion?
I'll move.
Motion support. Further discussion?
Your Honor?
Yes.
Um, I, I see the one big difference between the uh, the two bids is uh, the second bid includes uh, cleanup of the uh, the rocks that are already out of place. Uh, Craig, do we, do we have a plan to get those rocks back out of the sidewalks and people's yards?
Yes, we do. We're, get it all removed because, because it'll cause more complaints. Want to put the slag back in there to help with drainage, get this water off the street and go into the, to the gravel more. Couldn't be too high there with block the water from going off the street.
See in a couple of years, those stones just disappearing down in the money's just gonna go down, go down the drain as it were. I'd, I'd like to see something more. That is a lot of money. We, we gotta be very, very uh, careful what, what we, what we spend on what our future is. The uh,
Greg, did you check with Matt? I mean, is Matt okay with, he said the solution will work to get rid of the, pull the stone?
Yeah, we got, we need to pull the stone. It was put in, this is, this is cracking the city here. Should be done.
So, so the slag we're putting in is what we would normally put on a shoulder.
Limestone, right?
Correct.
Right.
Okay.
So we just didn't put in limestone at, at the beginning. There was stone underneath it and we missed it?
No, the stone was put in in place of the, the slag.
Oh, instead of the slag. Okay.
Oh, is it that it's gonna stay in place?
Slag? Yeah, yeah. Just like it does on, on the other city roads.
All right, further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. Uh, seven H. Discussion. Take action if appropriate to approve, not approve a proposal from D K Construction Inc. For sixty-one thousand two hundred and twenty dollars for the Mary Avenue Street Drain Outlet dredging project. Craig?
We want to uh, dredge where the Mary Avenue Drain Outlet into Spring Lake. Uh, the sediment's starting to collect at the mouth of the drain and needs to be taken down so we can uh, continue to use that drain and drains all the area uh, in the West Spring Lake Road area. We went out for bids. Uh, we got the Eagle Permit and the Army Corps of Engineers Permit for this project. Once we got those permits, we went out for bid. Um, we only received one bid, which um, did come in a little late and they come in, came in a little bit higher than we expected. After review, we've had some comments that um, due to the water level being lower, it might be a little harder, harder to dredge. Um, and we also received a couple of comments from contractors who um, wanted to bid on it, but didn't for some reason. Uh, one indicated that they couldn't do until June and I'm not sure why that stopped them from bidding because we didn't have a, a time to have it done by. But uh, we came a little bit higher than we expected. Uh, the one bid was late. So staff would like the city council to reject the bid and, and let us go off for bid again on this project.
Okay, so.
I'll support.
Okay. Motion Tim not to approve. Debbie support. Will do too. All right. Any more discussion on this topic? All right, and this is to not approve the proposal. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. To not approve it. Okay, seven I. Discussion. Take action appropriate. Schedule work session as a regular agenda item, April third, twenty-twenty-three. What do we have so far? Proposed twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four city budget. Anything else you guys want to add into the work session?
Your Honor.
Yes.
I would also like to, I would like, like to also add um, review of uh, speed calming devices on North Shore Drive.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
I, I was gonna suggest that. Thank you.
Speed calming measures, North Shore Drive. Okay. And then Tim, you had something?
Yes, um, doing some uh, research. Uh, we've, we've been getting some complaints about the uh, person uh, asking for money at the uh, at the ramp and uh, I've seen comments both ways. People saying, yes, it's, that's good. We should help out the poor and uh, allow them to do that and uh, but there seems to be a lot more complaints on, on the negative side. Uh, Supreme Court has ruled that we can't ban them from, from doing that. However, uh, we do have a peddler's ordinance in the city and a collection of, of funds. I'd like to have us uh, perhaps talk about uh, adding that, if we could add that to the ordinance and have them apply for a, go through the, the uh, process for peddlers permit.
Tell anything, no?
No, but it, it's collection. It's the same as if the, same, um, it would be along the same line as we have the Salvation Army that's out there asking for uh,
Donations.
Donations or the, the Tachtoys and the uh, the other ones that are asking for donations. They are exempt under, under the uh, according to the, uh, they are a, a not, a nonprofit organization. So they do have an exemption. Um, but I don't think that an individual can be a, a nonprofit organization. Otherwise I'd apply for it. I'd like to, please take a look at it.
Your, Your Honor.
Oh, go ahead, Craig.
The city did, attorney did review the solicitation a while back. I'll, I'll get that information back in your packet so you can review that.
Um, y- yeah, I, I was going to ask, um, you know, if, if, if we could consider moving the work, work sessions to the next council meeting. Um, we do get some significant community involvement when we talk about Lake Shore Drive or, or um, North Shore Drive specifically, um, and that is spring break. Uh, so I will be gone and I know many others will be as well.
Okay, so you're thinking maybe April seventeenth? To have it on the work session as opposed to the third?
Your Honor.
Craig, did we?
So on the North Shore Drives, uh, speed calming, we have some ideas that we want to present to city council. The city council's open to moving forward. The next step we want to take is to notify all the residents on North Shore Drive or what the plan is and get some feedback and, and make sure we have a majority of people that are, are willing to support putting speed bumps out there.
Your, Your Honor.
I don't, I don't want to slow it down by any means. So Craig, if you're sharing that in our packets or sending it ahead of times, I can, you know, I can share it through an email.
Yeah, my, my concern about delay is that a lot of those residents will be home by then.
Yep.
And they'll want to know what we're doing. I mean, they've all been down in Florida or wherever they go and they're gonna want to know what city council's doing about that road. And if we delay much longer, you know what happens.
Yeah. Well, in the work, yeah, if we put in a work session, there's really no public discussion or comment anyway.
Well, I know that, but we can say that we're working on it.
Right, yeah, that's fine.
And mean it.
You're okay with that, Will? If we?
Yeah, yeah, I'm fine.
And if you have some input, just email us.
Yep, I will.
To the council. Anything else you guys want to put on the work session? Okay, that's good. All right. Number eight. Any more public comments? Kayla over there, any trivia? No, all right. Uh, nine. Report. City manager.
No report.
Okay, city council members. Uh, Bill?
Um, Harbor Transit Board meets this Wednesday, so no report yet.
Okay, Will?
Uh, rat commission met last week. Um, discussed, um, several topics, including the tree board. We have Arbor Day coming up in April. Uh, Your Honor, I believe you're coming?
Yes, I'll be reading a story to the kids.
It will be sixth graders this year, so uh, maybe more captivating than our toddlers from last year.
I'll have to uh, increase my vocabulary a little bit.
But uh, um, we, we've had, we have a, a solid plan going forward. Mr. And Mrs. Hop kindly donated um, some trees for the kids. Um, so thank you uh, to her. Um, she does a, a great job with, you know, gearing it towards the kids, whatever age they are. So that's always cool uh, to see. Um, other than that, uh, there's a Nora meeting, I believe, is it next week, Craig? This week, this week, uh, Thursday?
Yes.
Um, other than that, uh, no further uh, comments.
Okay, Rich?
Um, the only comment I have is Craig, anything, any news on the sound system at all?
Nothing new.
Last we knew, the parts couldn't get here till September, I guess. Okay, uh, Jerry?
Um, KLH meeting tomorrow night here at six-thirty, City Hall. Um, and I will probably be absent from the next meeting. I have a surgery on the twenty-ninth.
Okay. All right, Debbie?
We met and we are planning the Easter egg hunt, the first one that we will have been, have been doing. April ninth at eleven A M. And we'll have three age groups and we have a bunny on site so people can take pictures with the Easter bunny. I put it on um, all the social media that I can think of. And so I'm hoping that, I've got a lot of people re- responding to me. So I'm hoping that we have a fairly good turnout. And we're kind of going between Grand Haven and Spring Lake so people can keep moving to the Easter eggs. And we're meeting the Tuesday before that to stuff the eggs. We have a thousand.
Sweet.
It's our first attempt, so hopefully it'll be successful.
Stuff them with?
Candy and stickers and treats.
Candy and cash.
Yeah.
No money.
Bill's putting in some cash.
That's it.
Okay, uh, Tim?
Uh, this last week, the uh, Board of Review met. We reviewed and uh, thirty-two petitions. And which I didn't, I haven't counted them all, but I think that's probably the uh, more than what I've had the last seven years uh, combined. We were busy from the time we opened to the time we closed the, the Board of Review. No, nothing major. Uh, just to let you know, the veterans exemptions, uh, the it costs the city one point two million dollars in taxes for the veterans exemptions. Um, I have no problem giving veterans exemptions. Um, I have no problem giving veterans exemptions. Uh, but that's one of the items that I will be pushing my state representatives to, uh, hopefully get the state to take over the liability for that. The, uh, which comes up to my, I will be meeting, uh, in Lansing on Friday with the Transportation Infrastructure and Information Technologies Committee, Legislative Committee, uh, And I have not received the agenda yet. I've heard some, some talk of the short-term rental, bringing its ugly head again. When I get that, I will send out a, a copy of that agenda to everybody, so you can see what we're talking about and if you have any questions, I can bring it up at that time. The, uh, MML Core Weekender is coming up in April, please, please attend, it's lots of good information. One, one thing I would like to see, uh, that I forgot to bring up with the, uh, Work session is, I'd like to see us talk about the, uh, assign the tasks of the visionary.
Okay, um, I noticed Craig on the calendar, we didn't have, uh, April third, City Council meeting on here. So maybe we can put it on there. And then last week, I attended the MPO Policy Committee meeting, there were some reps from MDOT. They said the Grand Haven Drawbridge should be completed, all the construction work by Memorial Day. It's a twenty million dollar project. Uh, that's all I have, end of report. Motion adjourned.
What will we do? With an open bridge?
Oh, I don't know. That's what they told, so.
Probably a good couple of weeks, at least.
Yeah. Are we still looking at twenty-four percent?